Welcome to the Auburn Board of Selectmen meeting, February 10, 2020. Before I call the meeting in order, per the open meeting law, is there anybody in the audience that is recording this meeting? Seeing none, can we stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda for tonight is no public comment. And we have a public hearing at 7:00 for SNJ Pizza.
SNL.
I'm sorry, SNL Pizza at 7-Eleven Southwood Street in Auburn. Let's see. So basically, we don't have a hearing. It's just we're going to talk about a change in the hours. And we have a representative here from the pizza shop. So yes, would you please come up and join us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for coming in.
I noted, noticed on the initial application, we filled out July 18 when this thing got started. And we had mistakenly put down Friday and Saturday hours 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. And we had intended to put 2:00 a.m. and then didn't realize that until we were well into the thing and then thought we could just notify the office that we're just going to change that. No, you're coming before the board again.
So basically, your interest is to change from 1:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Right. Oh, they absolutely do. Absolutely do. And it is incredible. I do a significant number of Domino's franchises. People forget about the second and third shift workers and the first responders and people working in nursing homes and hospitals and companies that are in fact working with foreign governments and foreign countries. And you've got time changes. They certainly are. And it is tough to get hot food at 2:00 in the morning.
And you have other locations that you are responsible for that are open till 2:00 in the morning?
We have, most of our locations in the greater Boston area are open to either three or four.
And with no issues, no problems?
Oh, none whatsoever. This comes from the fact that usually we find out when, if we've got a 1:00 closing and we're closing at 1:00 and now they're cleaning and getting ready for the next day, the phone is still ringing and you can't service them. And so we think this will take care of things.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Berthew.
So just to clarify, because our notes say that you're changing Sunday through Thursday?
Sunday and Thursday stay closed at midnight.
Okay. And Friday and Saturday?
Close at 2:00.
You want to change it from?
1:00 to 2:00.
1:00 to 2:00.
Right. There's precedent in the town and we're not asking for something that...
Through the chair, if I may. The initial application was for 11:00 to 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. And this new application is for 10:00 a.m.
So 10:00.
So it's not just...
So one hour on each end?
One hour on each end, yes.
Okay. So Domino's National requires all Domino's franchises to open by 10:30 in the morning. And so we had to back that up.
So we're talking from instead of 11:00 in the morning till 1:00 a.m. in the morning on Friday and Saturday, you're going from 10:00?
Right. We'll open every morning at 10:00. But Monday through Friday, we'll close at midnight. And Friday and Saturday, we'll close at 2:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would I be safe to assume that the bulk of this operation after midnight would be delivery?
Oh, 95% of every day is delivery.
So you don't have a lot of walk-in traffic?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thanks.
Okay. Is there any other comments, questions? Have you got anything else for us?
Well, I'm sorry.
Except for a lot of pizza, right?
When, yeah. After you vote, I have a comment.
Yeah, okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the change of the hours of operation as presented.
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion, comment, questions? Being none, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you. And if I could have 30 seconds to thank you and through you, every town committee that we've dealt with in this town has been absolutely spectacular. The cooperation, the patience that you've exerted with us, it has been a joy really to see this.
Thank you very much for those comments.
Because this is not, this is not the norm in some communities. But Auburn should be proud of their representatives. So we are very grateful for the help and cooperation that we got.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Best of luck.
Good luck and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to move up item 6B?
I'll make that motion, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, thank you. To the members of the board. First of all, I want to thank you. Last year was the first year that you had suggested voting on my goals before we actually did the annual evaluation, which is great because my contract year starts January 31st of every year, 30th. So this is helpful to have the goals set because it gives me another couple of months to get there. So I did ask to put this on the agenda again this evening to set the goals for the following year. Again, for January 31st of this year through January 30th of 2021. And these goals are in addition to the standard evaluation form that you give me. And within that, there are also several criteria that have to be met. So as we have done the last, primarily, we've, the board has voted for three goals for me each year. Last year, I believe, there were four. I would respectfully request three again this year. Except that being said, I would tell you that there are a lot of things that are going on this coming year. So up for discussion, there are quite a few projects that we're going to be involved in whether they're goals or not goals. Working on them. So through the chair, do you want me to just mention the three that I thought would be good goals and then have it for discussion?
I would please.
Or do you want to?
Just continue on and then leave it up for discussion.
Okay. So and the reason I chose these goals to bring to your, for your discussion, is because they really involve multiple departments. And I think it's important to always have a goal that comes from the board that isn't just in one section, that involves a lot of different employees, because it helps to set the goals for all of us when the goals come from you also. So the first one I would recommend would be the ADA Transition Plan. We just received a grant to put together an ADA Transition Plan. And this is going to involve, I can't think of a department that won't be involved. This also involves the school department. And we have to do an evaluation and analysis of every single town building, school building, town park, school park, playground. It's a massive undertaking. The second one I would recommend would be, in light of last week's news, the Mary D. Stone property transfer to Penrose and all the steps that are involved in that. So, and there is an item later on the agenda. So just want to make sure that we, and we'll get to it, but want to thank the Baker-Pulido administration for their support in getting the tax credits to Penrose. Now that Penrose has the tax credits, the plan is to transfer the deed to that property, which actually comes from the board. And we already have a town meeting vote for that. But there will be several other town meeting votes that will be required with regard to easements that we're going to be working on between now and the property transfer. Once the property is sold, we still will be playing a very large role in the redevelopment of this with the, because there will be waiting lists. There'll be work with a number of different boards and committees throughout the whole construction. So that would be the second one that I would suggest. And the third one I would suggest, again, following up on the vote that we got from town meeting in January, the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project. That's a massive undertaking. We are thrilled to get town meeting approval to proceed with the easements and the takings that technically this board is the authority for that. And with the town meeting vote, we can now proceed. But that involves, we're working with two different appraisers. We're working with Mass DOT, the feds, all the property owners. And then there is just a series of things that have to happen. And that project, as you know, is a good couple of years. But this year specifically, we have a lot to get done to get this in the queue and ready to go for maybe, maybe a little bit of construction in the fall, but most likely next spring. So the next year, we have a lot of work to do. So those will be the three. I propose the ADA Transition Plan, the Mary D. Stone property transfer to Penrose, and next steps that are involved in that. And keeping in mind, this starts moving the Julia Bancroft property also. But I wasn't putting that as a goal because that might take another few months. And the Auburn Street Reconstruction Project.
I know that we've had some discussion over the past years with goals. Geez, how much can you measure on? But this office and this town seems to be a nonstop project. And we are always in progress. And there's always something to show for it. And I think that if we get anything more than the three, I think that, yep, we'll be putting a lot more on her plate than need be. As we do our evaluation, we are not only looking at what her goals would be for the year, but also what the operation of the town is. Well, what progress and what developments have been made over the course of the year. So we will have a chance to evaluate. So I don't think anything more than three. And I think these here, they just, you know, following through with, you know, the information that's been presented to us and the stories, the hearings, that type of thing. I think it's time that, you know, I think these three are definitely a most important thing. And we can actually measure development and progress on these. So that would be my thought on these. And I will leave it up to board members. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just want to talk in general terms before addressing the three goals. And you actually just said a lot of what I was just going to say. You know, boards set goals for their town managers to kind of hold them accountable and give them something to work towards. As we see annually in the managers' self-evaluation, there are projects that are ongoing, large projects that, you know, we may be aware of, but the community may not be aware of. I mean, the town manager was in contract negotiations this year. There's always something in the hopper. So I've never felt that, that the town manager is one that we need to set specific goals to be sure she's doing her job because she does that every day and she goes above and beyond. But having said that, I understand that, you know, with our evaluation process, that is, you know, it's half of her evaluation. So I would agree that we do need to set these goals. I think that all three of them are excellent goals. If I recall correctly, last year, the ADA Transition Plan was a priority, but we were waiting to hear on the grant money?
Through the chair, that's correct. It was discussed as a potential goal last year, but we were applying for a grant. We weren't sure if we could get that grant. So we did apply for $65,000 and we got the grant.
Yeah.
Now we're about to embark on this transition plan because of it.
And so, I mean, I recall that being a priority for, you know, at least one, maybe two board members last year. So I think that's excellent. The Mary D. Stone property transfer. I mean, there's talk out in the community. People are excited about this project. And we want to see the town manager usher this through and spend her time on that because, you know, people know, once we get through the Mary D. Stone project, we'll be working on the JB project, you know. And, I mean, you know, unless you haven't been paying attention to what's going on in town for the last three years, this whole Auburn Street Reconstruction, Drury Square revitalization has been a priority. And, you know, I know that we have attended several meetings in regards to this. So this also has my full support. So I support all three of the recommended goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Berthew.
I'll just say I am totally fine with these three goals as well. I know, you know, we also have the condo or housing project out in West Auburn. I know we have the, still talking about with the police and fire, you know, possible multi-complex, the Julia Bancroft. So it, you know, you've got, we know you're working on more than these three. So I certainly can appreciate that you're assigning these three as this year's goals. But I know you're working on a lot more than that. So I'm more than happy with these three as well.
Mr. Malibity.
I'll just add that, yeah, I am also okay with these three goals. I think they're great. Like Mrs. Goodrich said, we already talked about the ADA compliance one. I only had two questions through the chair, if that's all right. The first one is, do you know what buildings would be prioritized through the ADA grant that we were given?
Every building.
Every building?
Yeah. The requirement is that you evaluate every, every building, every park, every playground, and every school. And then the transition plan will be an analysis of what we could do in the future for enhancing ADA accessibility, both under the law and beyond that. What would make some properties better, not necessarily required by law, but what could we do to improve those properties? And part of that ADA Transition Plan will likely be a recommendation that we start a disability commission. And that, so when the ADA plan is done, the next implementation step would be to advertise and appoint a disability commission. And the commission would help oversee the implementation of the ADA claim.
I didn't realize that it would be even involved. I mean, parks too is interesting, they would include that. And then my other question was with reference to the Mary D. So you said that there were town meeting, some things that were going to have to be brought to town meeting that would be voted on. Do you think that'll be at the annual town meeting, the majority of them, or?
Yes, through the chair. So this evening, well, we back up last week was the official announcement from the state that the tax credits are being awarded to the project. So we couldn't get everything ready for you for this evening. But we did ask the developer to come in at your next meeting on February 24. And at that next meeting, we are going to present to you a timeline of all the different steps that have to be done. The plan is to go at the Maytown meeting and get all the easements. We need to grant an easement. Penrose needs to grant one back to us because we have to maintain access to the fields. We also have to work with the planning board. They'll be going before the planning board shortly. And we will have a full timeline for you on all of this for the 24th.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? Being none, then I'll entertain a motion for the goals for the town manager for the year 2020.
I'll make a motion that we accept the three town manager's goals as described by her for the January 31st, 2020 through January 30th, 2021 year.
Second.
We're in discussion. Being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I can, just also, I'm just going to mention a couple of other things that we are going to be working on and we'll keep you also in the loop on this. Then I'll let you go on to your next agenda item. But the, last week, we also attended an event in New Bedford where we were awarded an MVP, which is a municipal vulnerability grant. And that is a, it was a $145,000 project. And just got the contract today signed with Fussin O'Neill to help work on that. That's a massive undertaking. That's another multi-month process. But we should be getting that finished this year as well. And also, another item that's on your agenda tonight, we have to reapply for our regional veterans district designation. So that's another entire project that we've got to work on over the next couple of months. The comprehensive permit process for Eastland Partners is coming up for the 320 unit. And the public safety facility, I gave you all the timeline. And that will be an enormous undertaking for all of us over the next 12 months to determine how we want to proceed. So there are some other major things that are going on. I'll keep you apprised on those as well. But I appreciate you voting for these three. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, now, can I have a motion to move up item 5D?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ms. Jacobson.
Through the board, I'm going to turn this to the town clerk because it really is a town clerk issue. I just will, if Deb Grimo wants to come up, I will say that this has been something that Deb has been working on with our town council for two...
Three years.
Three years, for three years now. So she can fill you in on this. But under the law, the Housing Authority vacancy created by when we lost the passing of Ann Weston is required to be filled by appointment of the Board of Selectmen under Mass General Law. Very similar to the process that you use when you appoint a library, board of trustee member when there's a vacancy. It's the same, same chapter, same process. So that being said, I'm going to turn it to Deb to explain what she's looking for this evening.
First of all, three years ago, 2017, we were advised not to put housing authority members on the ballot because they were supposed to do new regulations to have a tenant elected by the tenants.
Excuse me, Debbie, can you just move that microphone over so our listening audience may hear it also? Thank you.
Do you want me to repeat that?
No.
Okay.
Continue.
So in 2017, we got the notice from the Department of Community Housing about this new regulations that were supposed to be done that year. It all started, I guess, in 2014. However, they still have not, to this day, done these regulations. We've been going back and forth. Elections had gotten involved also and recommended that we don't put them on the ballot. Auburn Housing Authority is not under our charter. It isn't listed as a board, but we do it as, I don't want to say a favor, but have always included them on our ballot because it's just easier. So since they were going from a four-elected board to a three-elected board with one being tenant elected, they have not done the regulations to this day. So like I said, we've been going back three, every year, I've been going back with town council and with the Department of Community Housing and have talked with Auburn Housing just so that we're all on the same and agreed on it. So I did start the process early this fall, knowing that this was a busy election year. And with the passing and the vacancy of Ann Weston, I thought this year would be, you know, a good year to get it on because all of them are up now. So after going back and forth with Bob, he suggested that we put three elected seats on with the board appointing one for Ann's remainder of her term instead of putting it on the ballot as an elected position. So the one that's coming up this year, Alice Ray, she's going to, she said, she's indicated that she's going to run again. They're all five-year terms. We have two holdovers, one from 2017, one from 2018. So those two will be put on for the remainder of their years. So we'll have five, three, and a two-year. And then Ann's will be a one-year appointment to bring us through for the remainder of her term. And hopefully, the regulations will be done at that point so that there will be a tenant elected by the tenants of the Housing Authority.
If I may, I understand about the elected positions. And that's one of the votes you're going to be asking for tonight to get those onto the ballot.
Put those back on the ballot.
Okay. For the appointed, how do you foresee that happening? Will there be people that are, apply for it?
Yes. We're going to, we're going to list it as an open position. And I believe the Housing Authority is seeing, if they know anybody that's interested, to refer them because they know that it is going to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. So we will put it on our website.
So there will be an appointment? There'll be a joint meeting of the?
There won't be a joint meeting because they were supposed to let us know within 30 days. I don't know the exact law, but they were supposed to let you know under Chapter 41, Section 10. And under Chapter 11 is where you're going to go. So since they did not notify you and so many days have passed, you can just appoint somebody.
Okay.
They were supposed to give you within one month of the vacancy and...
I just wanted to clarify that, that we are going to be voting to put positions on the ballot. But we will also be appointing at some point when we receive an individual that has showed some interest in the mid-application. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of things regarding the appointed seat. You know, certainly I would want it advertised like it was a seat, you know, for any other board vacancy, not just reach out to the Housing Authority to see if they have somebody?
Oh, no, it is. It's going to go on the website as an open. And I did tell them that.
Yeah. And so now, just to be clear, so they're a five-member board. And so moving forward, moving forward, they, technically, they're a five-member board. So with the new regulations, which DHCD has not promulgated the regulations on electing a housing authority tenant seat, it will be three ballot seats, one governor's appointee, and one that will not go on the ballot but will be elected by all tenants of the Housing Authority?
When they do these regulations?
Right, no, I understand that.
Yeah. Like Bob said, if by chance they don't, we'll go year to year as far as the appointment or extending whatever.
You know, and I just, I just want to say, I think it's, you know, overall, it's been disappointing that we have had these seats just as holdovers because we are unique to other towns and that we already have residents on the board who are tenants.
Tenants on the board.
I know they don't count because it doesn't fall into the Housing Authority, but they already, you know, they have, they have two voices on the board. So I look forward to filling these seats.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. Is there anything else? Okay. Ms. Jacobson, have you got anything on this?
I would just echo what the town clerk said. We will, our office can work with the town clerk to make sure that we advertise this, similar to what we did when we had the vacancy on the board of trustees of the library. We put it on our website, we put it on social media, we put it on Auburn Cable TV.
We put it on our, our website, we put it on social media, we put it on Auburn Cable TV, and we really do a good outreach effort to encourage people to apply.
Great. Okay, well, then I'm going to ask for a motion, so that we, the board votes to place holdover seats on the May 19th, 2020 annual town election. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we place the holdover seats on the 2019-2020 annual town election ballot.
One second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion?
There will be three seats on the ballot.
It'll be for three seats, and I think we probably should...
The three seats.
Not just the holdovers, you know, because the Housing Authority hasn't been on the ballot, so...
Right.
So, that'll be for three seats, so that's on the motion? Okay. Any further discussion? Any, none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just make a motion so we're clear, that we, that we advertise the seat that the board will be appointing, and put it on our agenda to schedule a date of when we want to make this appointment.
Second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, I'd like to move up one item, thank you, Mr. Bertheum. Item 8A, I'd like to move up item 8A while town clerk in the present.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, and Miss Willetti, please.
So, I'll try to be pretty brief with it. You all have in your packets the little update that Mr. Carpenter and I drew up for everyone. This is just going over what we've done so far with the voter turnout committee, and just a really brief overview of where Auburn stands in regard to voter turnout relative to some of the neighboring communities around us. So, you can see from the chart, so Auburn's in orange here, and the county is in blue, the county average. I just want to point out that the county average really isn't the full county, it's representative of 22 towns. So, this is all data that I had collected previously, just out of curiosity, and for school, actually, to try to see where towns were in Worcester County. So, there were 22 towns that I was able to get information from over a 20-year period. The earliest was in 1993. I think the only town that actually had data going back that far was the town of Spencer. So, really, up until '95, you're only looking at Spencer, and after that, more and more towns started to collect data and have it readily available that we could throw in here. So, from it, you can see that Auburn's actually has stayed fairly above the county average with regard to voter turnout, which is pretty impressive. Unfortunately, both Auburn and the county have moved in a pretty, well, have consistently moved downwards over the last 20 years. And this is only annual town elections, by the way. This isn't including presidential or state elections. This is strictly looking at annual town elections. So, in 2000, Auburn's voter turnout was around 28.89%, and then in 2019, our most recent election, we had the lowest turnout in the 20-year period, which was 9.17%, and that actually dipped below what I have for a county average. So, hopefully, that's just a little bleep where we dunked below the county. But either way, it seems to be a, a problem, not just for Auburn, and it's certainly not limited to Auburn, but for the communities around us as well. I don't have any, unfortunately, the state didn't collect this data for any of the other communities. There's no central place to get it that I could find, so when I looked for this information, I went to individual town clerks to get it, which I think is the only possible way to do it. So, I can't really compare the entire state or see what the state's general trend is unless we look at state elections, and those are inherently different anyway. But the second chart on here is just to look at the last year's election. And like I said, this may not be the best reflection of Auburn's voter turnout, because it was our lowest year in the last 20 years, or our lowest turnout for the last 20 years. Auburn's indicated in gray, and this blue line that goes across the chart here is the county average for that year. So, as you can see, there's wide variation between communities as to what is and what has a high turnout and what has a low turnout. Unsurprisingly, well, I should start with, the town of Spencer was the town that had the highest turnout in any of the years looked at, and they came up to, I think it was 51%. At the very least, they barely broke 50% one year, I believe it was the year 2000. No other town came close to that, but at the same time, on the ballot that year, were three dead exclusions and a recall for a member of the board. So, there was a lot going on, a lot of discussion that probably prompted such a high turnout that year. Everyone else was pretty far below that. And again, from the second chart, you can really see the wide variation that exists between the different communities in the county for voter turnout. From here, Mr. Carpenter and I had discussed where we wanted to go after looking at this and seeing that it's, it's not an Auburn problem. It really is a county-wide, for whatever reason, there's a depression in the amount of voter participation in, in local elections, and that's unfortunate. So, one thing that we wanted to do moving forward is send out a type of survey. So, we have two surveys that we were thinking would be appropriate. One would be for residents in the community to try to get a grasp of maybe why there is a lower than, than turnout than what we'd want, as well as to get an idea of who is voting. I think we all kind of figure that the, the problems that you see at the national elections, where you see people my age and under 25 really not showing up in elections, is probably exacerbated at, at a local level. But we just wanted to throw that out there to see if we could, we could get a response from that on our survey, see who really is voting, and then how they're getting the information, how they know when the election is, and if there's any way that there, that could be improved. If they get the survey and they didn't vote in the last election, we can ask them, hopefully, why they didn't, and then maybe get an idea as to what the barriers are. Either is it that they just aren't interested, or is it that there was a problem? People are, I don't know, more busy? Was there, were they out of town that day? And are they just not aware that there's early voting and, or access to absentee ballots? Perhaps that's the issue. So, that's what we wanted to get at, and of course, I'm not early voting for town elections. But anyway, to see what, what potential solutions there might be, or what the real barriers were for everyone. We'll say, though, that one of the questions on this survey for residents is, did you vote in the last election? And I actually had a friend who's a grad student at UMass also, who just wrote his thesis on how surveys can be a little inaccurate when they ask that question, particularly polls. I find that people, it's about a 10% bump in people when they're asked after an election if they voted in it. So, whatever the results are, we will have to take them with a grain of salt, that some people may say that they voted when they really didn't, but I still think that the survey may be a good way of getting at what the barriers were for, for people, or what their reasoning is for not voting. And hopefully, that can extend, because it's not just Auburn, like I said, but other communities as well that are having this problem. So, hopefully, we can, we can learn a little bit more about that. The second survey, and this is the one that really we wanted to come to you tonight for, because this one is a little bit easier to send out. We just wanted to send it via email, and really send it with the, the message, if you have time, because I know this is a busy time for clerks with the elections coming up and everything. So, of course, we don't want to put, take a lot of time to fill it out, so hopefully, we kept it pretty brief and easy, a couple minutes to fill out. And in fact, we made sure in this even more, and also wanted to get your input on if there's anything that should be added or taken away from it. But this was really to see if there's anything that other communities have tried and has it worked. There may be something that a community's already done. We don't want to try to reinvent the wheel if we don't have to. If some community has found that, that they've increased their voter turnout by having some particular form of advertising, or any, any other way of increasing voter turnout, then that's something we'd like to know and see if it's able to pursue. So, that's what we wanted to come here tonight for, to really get the board's blessing and approval to go forward with, with emailing that survey out to, to town clerks in the area, and, yeah, ask for input and advice, and any questions that you might want to see added, or anything you might want to see added. I did speak to Mr. Bertheum before he had to leave, and his only recommendation for the survey, and for both of them, was to add a "prefer not to say" to all of the questions that is there on a few of the forms already, but he thought that it should be included on each question, so, and that's, that's a pretty easy fix that we can, we can throw in there pretty quickly, just in case anyone's uncomfortable with answering any of the questions. We can add a "prefer not to say" button for them. So, that, excuse me, that was his only suggestion, so I guess I'll open it up in case anyone has any other suggestions that they want to throw out.
Mrs. Goodrich?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is for discussion purposes. This isn't, you know, questioning what you have done. I appreciate what you've done, but first, looking at the town clerk survey. So, my thought on, on roughly how many elected positions are on your local ballot annually? So, I know there are communities that have a lot of elected positions, you know, like a lot of elected positions. I think what would be important to know, if, if we're going to do this, to get the information, some communities have, on all of those elected positions, if you win that seat, you're, you now become available for benefits through the town. And it's my understanding that some people run for a seat, so they have, whether it's the health insurance, the dental insurance, they get a small stipend, they're available for benefits. So, I would be interested to know, you know, like I said, on these towns that have seats that we, we don't even consider having here in Auburn, to see if, if those are benefited. Also, on the town clerk survey, I'm not, I'm curious as to what your thought process is, to what the significance of whether the town has, the community has a town manager, because I, I'm not, I'm not making the connection whether it's a town administrator or a town manager, like why, like what the significance of that, what you, what your thought process was on that? And, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, move to the other section? So, it's not that I'm not in favor of doing resident surveys. My concern is, how do we get this out? You know, we have a resident survey, what is your age? If we have five different voters at one resident, so we're doing five different mailings for them to, to answer this survey, who will pay for it? I think we learned recently from the public swimming pool, how many surveys we got back, and I know we did, correct me if I'm wrong, did we do a survey on the 61A land? I know we did two surveys in the last several years, and the percentage of, of surveys that we got back, I'm just, I'm concerned that this is a significant cost. I'm not saying it's not worthy of getting the information, but what the best way to get this information is, because I don't know what it would be. I would be, at first, before I took any action, I would want to know what the cost is through the, you know, through the chairman to the town manager, and I don't expect that information tonight, to know what the cost of doing a full survey to send out to every voter. And we all know that people are highly unlikely to return it unless there's a self-addressed stamped envelope included, or a simple way to do it. People may be well-intended that they're going to fill in the survey, then it sits on their desk, because they've got to get an envelope, or they've got to get a stamp, and, oh, they probably don't need it now anyway, everybody's already responded. And again, this isn't a slam on your work, I'm just, these are questions that I have. And, you know, I think, I think that, I think that people vote in local elections for many reasons, and one year they do, one year they don't. So, I'm just, I'm concerned about moving forward with the survey, the cost, who would, he would, we would send it to, and specifically, the town manager question.
Ms. Goodrich, would you like to make some comment to that?
Sure. So, I'll start with the town manager question. So, the reason that was thrown in there, and actually, I've thought about taking it out now, because there's no reason really for it for our studies, that was really just an academic question. I was wondering if there was going to be a correlation. So, some of the academic journals that I've read have suggested that municipal governments see a decrease in voter turnout, you can see, it doesn't apply to Auburn, actually, when a town switches and adopts a town administrator, because there are fewer questions on the ballot, or they feel that there is, voters feel that less, like their vote will impact the community. And so, that was just an academic, I wanted to see if there was any correlation there. And you can actually tell that voter turnout was going down before Auburn ever adopted the town manager position, so it wouldn't even apply to us. Not that I would ever suggest ending that anyway, and getting rid of our town manager, but that was just...
Thank you.
Even if it would, it was just a, an academic question. So, I was actually thinking of getting rid of that anyway, but that's, that was why it was originally added to the survey. As for the residential survey, how to get it out, we've been talking about that a little bit. Again, tonight, we were only really looking for, blessing move forward with the town clerk survey, because that one's easy, that one's via email, internet, there's no cost to do it. The resident survey, we'll still be moving forward with that slowly, and talk, coming back to you, we weren't going to look for final approval tonight and then move forward with something, and we certainly weren't hoping for that. But what we were thinking is that there could be a same, a digital one that people could post to the social media pages and hope to get some responses from residents, and then on top of that, we could have paper ones available at public places, such as the library, Town Hall, and see what response we, responses we get over a four-week period or so. Not sure how many we'll get, and right now, I can't answer how many we'd expect to print out, or what the cost would be, but we weren't discussing doing a mailing. I know that would probably be the most efficient way to get a lot of respondents, but unfortunately, I think the cost would be too great, like you said. So, I think that's what we were looking to do for the resident survey, is just have people, when they're already in a location, fill it out if they see it and are interested in it. But like I said, I think the town clerk response, or that the town clerk survey is really where we'd like to go next with it.
Ms. Grimo, have you any comments?
I mean, if you want to mail them out, it would be really costly, because just sending the census out, and we have close to 12,000 voters, so, like you said, in one household, you could have five, you could have 10, you could have two. So, depending on who's going to answer that, or who you're going to mail them to.
Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, once she's done.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich?
So, so, this has been one of my concerns, and, you know, been talking openly about it, the concern that, you know, we want to be respectful of the town clerk's position, as well as working together to, to increase voter participation. You know, so, I don't know how Ms. Grimo feels about this specific survey or anything. She's the one that has the relationships with the town clerks, the emails with the town clerks. You know, I would much rather see at this point, if we were to use this survey, say, you know, not telling Ms. Grimo what to put in her email, but to say, I have been working closely with the Board of Selectmen to, over concerns of voter participation, and they have asked me to distribute this. I just, I would rather keep it under the, under the purview of the town clerk with, with elections, just my personal preference, but acknowledge that she's been working with the Board of Selectmen, and, and under discussions about concern for voter turnout.
More comments? I think from what we have here tonight, I think we've still got some questions. I think that this committee, if they wish to continue, we'll meet again, and then we can bring it to a full board with more comments and see where we go with it. But at least we've, but we've broken ground on this, and we'll see where we go with it. Thank you. So, this will be something that we'll probably table, and then we can bring back at our February 24th meeting, is it February 24th? Then, I'll just send a table that's over 24.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just add to, to follow up on a comment Mrs. Goodrich made and, and the town clerk made. First of all, I want to thank you, because the surveys are always difficult to distribute. So, we're both talking about different surveys we've done. I just quickly did an analysis, but when we did our swimming pool survey, which we actually sent out two surveys, the first one had about 940 recipients. If you figure, we have a town of 16,500, and if you figure at a minimum 20% are under 18, so anyone over 18 is eligible, so you're talking about 13,000 people that could have taken it, and 900 took the survey. And that was about a 7% turnout. The average, high average for any kind of survey instrument in a community is generally thought of as being about 10%. That's generally what you get back. We did the master plan survey recently, and that was, we put a lot of time and effort into that. I think if this does go forward, a couple of questions that I would have also would be, what survey mechanism would you be using if you are doing it both online and hard copy, which we've done also? Who's actually telling all the results? Who's putting everything into the system? Because even if you get the, the hard copy, somebody actually has to input it into the electronic version of it. And then, again, how, how do you reach out to the voters of the community? How do you get to them? We've looked at putting things in our tax envelopes before, and there is a cost to that, depending on the size of what you put in, the weight of what you put in, so that could also be very expensive, about $7,000.
And on the census, the dates are on, each year's census, the date of the town election for that year is on the census, so they are getting that also. The signs, you know, I get them on, on the fire station sign, and then have DPW with their sign, and have it rotated around town, just because, you know, someone might go up Route 12, or they may decide to go to Tarnia, they may decide to go North Oxford Street. There's many ways to get around town and avoid certain streets. So, I drive Kenny Fearbanks nuts with moving this sign daily for above two weeks.
Chairman, we, I just want to remind the town clerk, we also have the availability now, thank you to Chief Coleman, of the availability of the electronic science at most, I believe we have six at the, at the businesses, so I, I would encourage use of those as well.
Right, and who's, who's going to ask those, I don't even know what businesses they are, but who's going to ask the businesses that they'll put the election information on?
But they've already agreed to.
Election stuff? I know they agree to emergency stuff.
They agreed on emergency, right, I'm not sure.
I don't know that an election falls under the...
I'm not sure. I'll look into that, it's a good point, yeah.
Because I wouldn't want to be asking something that they're going to...
But, so I think, all I was trying to say is, I think the mechanism for the survey becomes important, and who's collecting the data, and who's inputting... And who's collecting the data and who's inputting the data? We found that quite a few people, it doesn't matter how often you give it to them and you hand it out to them, they're just not responding. And then unfortunately, there are those that will respond multiple times. Vote early and often, right? And that's another issue with, surveys aren't exact. It's just not an exact science. So, and I'm happy to give you some information, if, you know, helpful on what ones that we use. I believe the last one we did was Survey Monkey. It was a good tool to use. But the average that you can expect at, at best is probably about a 10%.
And that makes sense that we wouldn't get a high turnout. I think we were thinking, maybe we take the results with a grain of salt, with whatever we get, see if there was anything that came along. Not take what it was said as, as fact. I mean, that's why I brought up that, you know, we saw a 10% blip in who said that they voted in an election and really didn't. When you look at the voter rolls, that was a, a project that a friend had done. So I think, yeah, there's, you can't take a survey for, for fact. I would agree with that. As for the form, so this was made, I, using Google Forms, which is something that I've used before in surveys. We can look into any other kinds of things to use. This one is, is pretty simple, pretty easy to use for the digital copies that are done. The results are sent to whoever owns the survey, directly through their email, so they can log in and see the results whenever. As for inputting from paper copies, I think that would be on us as the committee that created it to, to put in and be responsible for making sure that everything is put in accurately. So that's, yeah.
Okay. Well, there was some discussion here. So as I had mentioned earlier, to see if we can table this until the 24th meeting and bring back some more information and just, we'll continue the process.
Sure. I'll make a motion to table it until February 24th?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Debbie, for coming in tonight and standing with us. Next thing we have here is under item five, item 5B, the annual town meeting, May 5th, 2020. I don't know where the time is going. This is absolutely crazy. But anyway, first, we're going to have to look at is open the warrant for the May 5th, 2020 annual town meeting. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair. We looked at the calendar and backed everything up for when our, we have to mail the warrant. And we do like to give a couple of extra days, not just what's required under our bylaws. And we also felt it would be appropriate to open the warrant for this period of time. So if we vote to open the warrant this evening, we thought you could leave it open until Monday, March 2nd. That gives people about three weeks to put items on. I think that's plenty of time. Everybody knows the annual town meeting is always the first Tuesday in May. So the boards and commissions, we do notify them. Sharon lets everybody know when the warrant's open and closed. But they, they're all aware that this takes place annually and they know what the dates are. So I think three weeks is more than enough time to get items to us.
So what we have in front of us to open the warrant tonight, February 10th, 2020, for the annual town meeting on May 5th.
I'll make a motion to open the warrant for the May 5th, 2020 annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any question, comments? Beating none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And vote to close the May 5th, 2020 annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make a mo... I'm sorry.
Yes, please.
Make a motion to close the May 5th, 2020 annual town meeting warrant on Monday, March 2nd, 2020, at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Beating none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. We have a drain layers license application here in front of us from Little Diggas Construction in Auburn. And they've been with us for several years. They've actually been licensed within the previous five years. And they are not required to be here. We have our paperwork in front of us, the applications. And we also have from Joanna Paquin, the sewer superintendent, recommending a application be approved. Mrs. Goodrich.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license provided that all applicable requirements of the state and town and any of its, any of its departments, boards, and commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all the conditions stated upon it. Failure to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Beating none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I have a question after that.
Okay. Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've just noticed on a couple of the applications recently, and I'm hoping that they're in easy-to-correct form. But, but when we just have the signature of the applicant, if there could also be a line for the printed name because we don't know who the applicant is. A lot of the times, you can't make it out. So most applications have a, a line that says the printed name and then the signature. Even, I mean, I believe that's Joanna Paquin, approval of the sewer superintendent. But even still, I prefer to know who's signing off on these. So if we could, through the chairman to the town manager, just request that we look at this application to include something.
I think that's a great point. And Ms. Jacobson, is that something that we can...
It should be fine. It might, it might require a vote of the sewer commission. I'm not sure. But either way, that's, that's a very simple response. It makes sense. It is hard to see what some of these signatures. I just noticed that on, as we were talking earlier on the pizza, I looked at it three times to figure out what the signature, who the person was.
Okay. I think probably what we should do, we'll, we'll make a motion there. Get this done so that they know that it's...
Make a motion to look at all applications.
Yeah.
To have a, an added line if it's not already there that says printed name and signature. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. That was a motion.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think it's a great idea. And, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Chairman.
Thank you. Now we have gift acceptances from the fire rescue, from Bernard J. Melikin for $300 to the Auburn Fire Department gift account.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And that's the only one we have for tonight. We have a, no proclamations or recognitions for tonight. And the next we have under the town manager items, it's item 6A, a report on the donations to and expenditures from the gift accounts for the police department and the fire department for fiscal year, fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 19. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, you have a report in your packet. I believe the board voted at its last meeting for this specific memo or data on donations that were made to the gift accounts for both police and fire and expenditures made out of those accounts specific to these two fiscal years, 18 and 19. We're still in '20. That's why you've chosen 18 and 19.
Well, if I may ask you, would you kind of go over some of the things that they have purchased?
Sure. So I know that the board asked for just a summary. So each chief has provided. So I'm happy to go over it. So from the police chief, in 2018, there were zero purchases. In 2019, they purchased a drone in the amount of $3,845 and made a purchase for the installation of two blue display lights for the exterior of the main entrance to the police station at a cost of $1,920. During that same period, the police department received $325 in donations for those two fiscal years. And the second page is the fire department. The status is in fiscal 218, there were 11 purchases from the gift account. Bottled water for fire apparatus, $71.25. Helmet shields, $224. T-shirts for the participants in the youth leadership academy, $238.06. Flowers and mulch for the firefighter's memorial, $34.92. Registration for members to attend a District 7 safety seminar, $175. A management class for the administrative assistant to attend, that was $65. Department t-shirts that are $458. And these are different than the standard uniforms. That's why it was a difference. The service renewal for the electronic sign for $520. The HeartSafe community roadway signs, $152. An EMT reimbursement, $136. And pink cancer t-shirts, $856. In 2019, there were five purchases from the gift account. Again, this is fiscal year. Registration for 17 members to extend an extrication class, that was $935. T-shirts for, again, participants for the youth leadership academy, $276.12. Smoke detectors, $89.61. A drone, $1,131.59. And Christmas wreaths for the apparatus. As you know, they primarily decorate the fire trucks for the Santa, for the Santa tour. And during that same period, the fire department, two-year, for those two fiscal years, they received $4,526.32 in donations.
Well, thank you very much for that, Ms. Jacobson. It was just a question I had because we do receive a lot of these donations in from individuals, from groups, for the different ones. We understand that, you know, there's many come in for, say, for the Pappas concert series. But when it gets to the police and fire, there's nothing been said one way or another what is there. And it was just, out of curiosity and just to find out exactly so the public would know where their donations are going. And I think that, you know, the list are great. And I think it just, and they do, they benefit the service members of the fire and police departments. And I thank you very much for that.
My pleasure. Thank you. And I also want to thank the chiefs. I say my pleasure, but their pleasure. Thanks to both of them.
The next we have is item 8C. It's request the Board of Selectmen to vote on the, approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Auburn, Charlton, Oxford, and Southbridge to continue the South Central Massachusetts Veterans Service District. Ms. Jacobson.
Thank you. Through the chair, in your packet, I gave a pretty detailed explanation of what we're doing this for tonight. So I'll just try to summarize it and then I'm happy to answer any questions. But back in 2015, Auburn first joined the district along with Oxford. A district had already been established. That was Charlton and Southbridge. And the reason we joined the district was because of the state law, specifically under Chapter 115, that states that communities with a population of 12,000 and above are required to have a full-time veterans agent. Even given our caseload at the time, a full-time veterans agent is very difficult to justify as far as with that type of a caseload. That being said, the town of Auburn and Oxford was, because under the law, if you already had a veterans district agent, excuse me, a veterans agent in that position, you didn't have to commit to compliance with the full-time because that person was already there when that law was promulgated. That being said, we anticipated down the road that we were going to have to get a new veterans agent. And as it turns out, we have had to do that. So at the time, to be proactive, and I also believe it provides better services to the veterans of all of our communities to enter into a district. And as it turns out, Auburn has had a veterans agent in the past that had some health issues and was absent quite a bit. And we had coverage through the district so that nobody did not get their benefits. Everything continued because we were able to have coverage. So those under the law, your designation for a district lasts two years and then you're allowed one two-year extension. So we've got both. So we got the two-year designation. Then in 2017, we got the one-year extension. Then in January of this year, I got a letter that we have until April to reapply. So we have to reapply again. And under the law, not under Chapter 115, but under mass general law, and I'm sorry, I don't have that reference, but I will get it, of Chapter, Chapter 40, Section 4A. The chief executive officer of a city or town who's allowed to execute a contract, which would be the town manager in Auburn. If you're doing that with more than one community, so in other words, it's an intermunicipal agreement, meaning there's two-plus communities, the Board of Selectmen in each town has to approve of the agreement. So the board had voted previously for me to sign the agreement. And now I'm asking the board to do so again. It will enable us to continue to operate as we have been. I would then, I was just voted to be chair of the district Board of Directors. So I'm going to be responsible for putting the application together to the state for this district and making sure that, you know, we have our regular meetings, we post our meetings. And under, so that's the IMA. The IMA stands for intermunicipal agreement. Under the Chapter 115, they look at the aggregate population. So the numbers that I showed you here in the IMA are estimated, obviously, the 2010 census, which is the last full census that was done. Our numbers are actually a little bit lower than that. They're 59,000. But even if you take the current estimates, which are, again, are just estimates, we still come under that threshold of 61,000. So under that, we need one full-time director. We need the equivalent of one full-time agent, which in our case, we have two agents. So the state has authorized that to be the equivalent. And you need one full-time clerk, which is provided by the town of Charlton. The clerk provides assistance to Charlton and Southbridge. Each Auburn and Oxford, each have our own clerks that provide the backup and do the administrative, a lot of the administrative work. So the town of Southbridge, I believe they're voting[1600.45] So the town of Southbridge, I believe they're voting this evening as well, they have to restructure their position because the current district director is retiring. And that current district director is an employee of the town of Southbridge and also wears multiple hats and has other positions in Southbridge. The director position, it is a full-time director, but he also does other things. So the position is being restructured in Southbridge to just be a veterans district director. Under that scenario, Southbridge, if it was a 60, let's say it was a $64,000 job, that Southbridge would pick up $32,000, Charlton picks up $16,000, because they're, they're the ones that primarily use this director as their agent, as well as the director for the whole district. And because we're required to have this, Auburn and Oxford would each pay $8,000 in addition to our current budget that we have for our part-time veterans agent. And I would say that our current veterans agent's doing a tremendous job. He's actually almost doubled the amount of clients, cases that he has, which means more veterans are getting more benefits that they're eligible for, so that's a good thing. It also means that the town will be paying more in benefits, because we're reimbursed from the state for 75%, so the other 25% is the town. So there is, it's definitely a cost to the town, but it's, it's the cost that we should be doing, it's to make sure that our veterans have what they're eligible for and what they deserve to get. So tonight's vote would be for the IMA, and in the IMA, I just wanted to show you all how the financial structure worked. And there's also a nice chart in here that the new town administrator from Charlton prepared for us. That shows kind of how this works, with the board of directors being made up of the town managers and town administrators of each town, the veterans services director being an employee of the town of Southbridge and primarily servicing Southbridge and Charlton, each Auburn and Oxford having our own veterans agent servicing our communities, but then overall, everybody can provide backup to one another when needed.
Great.
Does that explain it? I know it's, it's complicated.
No, there's a lot to it, but you know what, the, the veterans, you know, if eligible, should get the benefits for their service and their time and their sacrifices. And I thank you very much for keeping this together and, well, complying with the state law, but this is gonna be a great thing, I think, and we move forward with it. So I'll then entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Auburn, Charlton, Oxford, and Southbridge to continue the South Central Massachusetts Veterans Services District.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We move on to update on the Penrose tax profits for Mary D. Stone.
Yes, this is exciting news, and as, as you've seen, it's also been in the paper, and I did notify the board by email about this as well, but just wanted the public to know if they haven't heard it yet, that the Mary D. Stone School developer, who is Penrose Properties, was, last week, it was announced that they've been awarded their low-income housing tax credits, which are both state and federal tax credits that pass through the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level. And because they got those tax credits, in addition to the historic tax credits that they've received, which you as a board have supported and been great, as well as the historic commission, the planning board, we had so many boards and commissions in town that wrote letters of support, including all of our legislative delegation, the council on aging, the fire chiefs, the police chief, the elder services director. And all of those tax credits together make it possible for this project to now proceed. So as we talked about earlier, over the next six to eight months, it's gonna be very busy, making sure that we get that property transferred over to Penrose, and their plan is to start construction in July. We're coming before you on the 24th with the representatives from Penrose, who are going to just walk you through the plans. You can see some of the new drawings, they're exciting, because when they went for the historic tax credits, there were a couple of tweaks that were made that made the buildings actually even, even more attractive. They already were, but now I think that the plan is beautiful. And we're excited that this project is gonna proceed. So we will come to you with a timeline, so you'll see how everything follows. The other good news is that at the same time they got their tax credits, they were invited by DHCD to put in an application for Julia Bancroft for this current round. And similar to Mary D., we anticipate it would be two, if not maybe the third, hopefully the third round of funding, because the project would never get funded on the first round. So now that the Mary D. is done and through the pipeline, we're allowed to put another application in.
Great.
So that will be the next one that we're working on, and Penrose is really hoping that the projects will be about a year apart. So Julia Bancroft would probably close approximately a year from now, if the funding comes through from the state, at the same timeline that Mary D. did. There's always, you know, possibility it's a little longer, but we're really excited about it.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Next, we have a reminder on the 2020 Citizens Leadership Academy. Ms. Jacobson.
Through the chair, there is a flyer in your packets. We have been promoting this through our website, Auburn Cable TV, social media, as well as through Dr. Brunel and her notification to her, some 4,000 parent family list that she sends it out. And last year, we actually got quite a few applicants when she did send that out. So we're just really trying to encourage people to participate in this. This would be the third one that we've run, and it's exciting. We have an opportunity to meet a lot of residents that we wouldn't normally meet, and these residents have an opportunity to learn about us and get to meet us. And the nice thing is, in both the first class and the second class, we had graduates who then signed up to be on boards and commissions and get more involved in the town. And that's the whole intent, is to try to increase the applicants. And I think I mentioned, but at this point, we have more applicants for board and commission seats than we actually have seats. So I hope, to think that this is working.
Yeah. I would say definitely, it's definitely beneficial to the town, because it's always, you go to any town and there are always boards, commissions, committees, even volunteers. Just, and again, I can't say enough, thank you to all of the ones that have been participated in the Auburn programs. It's, you make it happen and we do well with it. Is there any other question? Yes. Mr. LaLevy.
I just wanted to add a comment. I mean, we were just talking about, and the subcommittee that I'm on is on voter turnout and voter participation, and that's not the only way that people participate in municipal government, and it's great to hear that, you know, this is, this is working, it's getting people involved on the boards and commissions, so that's awesome.
Yeah, it's great. Thank you. What we noticed in the last class especially too, was a really broad range of ages that participated, which is really nice. We had some people who were new to town, we had some younger voters, and we had some senior citizens as well. So it was nice to get a cross-section of the whole population in town, representing all of the demographics that participated. And I know on this board, Mrs. Goodrich participated in the first year, and last year, Mr. Carpenter participated. So, and we had 16 in each group, I believe, 16. So it's worked out great, the employees enjoy it too, because it gives them an opportunity to explain what they do, how things work, what the operations are. We give tours of a lot of our different facilities, so I think we have found that the people who participate are really surprised at, first of all, everything that gets done by each department. It is impressive when you see them in action and what they're actually doing. And then the tours are always interesting, because it's good for them to know where their taxpayer dollars go, and what kinds of programs and services they're getting as taxpayers here, and how it all functions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Jacobson, we're calling you again, but it's the fiscal year 21 budget schedule, and the May 5th, 2020 annual meeting is coming up, and the time is flying.
It is. So we just wanted to let you know, Ed Kuzinowicz, the assistant town manager and CFO, and I are finishing up the budget for FY '21. We should be getting it to you probably within a week or so. Just wanted to give you the opportunity to see it, and it will probably then be on the February 24th agenda, but we're gonna try to get it to you earlier than that. We have one or two more budget meetings, we're just about there, we have to go back and revisit a couple of them and start inputting everything into the system. So it is a lengthy process, we've been working on it since the end of December, so we should be ready shortly. It's a short timeframe, but we'll, we'll make it, we'll make the deadlines under the, under the bylaws for getting it to you, and then, as you know, the board then transfers it to the finance committee, and then they start their work.
Okay. Well, I guess, just as a comment, it is, it's coming up quickly. I know you're still in the process of, you know, budget meetings with the different departments, but it'd be interesting to see how well you feel that the town is doing when we get to that point where we're ready to send from the board here to the finance committee and see what the, what the outlook is in general. Thank you. Anybody have anything else on that? All right. Well, the next we have is no public comments tonight, and has any board members got anything tonight? Ms. Jacobson, have you got anything else?
The only thing I want to mention, because I did, it wasn't on the agenda, but I did go to an announcement last week, I mentioned it quickly earlier, about the MVP program. We did get a grant for $145,000 to analyze and come up with some strategies for protecting our drinking waters, so we'll be working with the Auburn Water District, as well as looking at green bridge design for our culverts. Specifically, we're gonna be taking a look at Sword Street, and just signed the contract today with Fussin O'Neil, who will be the consultant that will be working on that with us. The intent is to have the plan and the report and all this analysis done by June 30th. So we're excited about it. It's a great grant to receive. It's a really good program that the state started, and we are grateful that we were selected. I believe there were maybe 10 communities that were represented at the meeting last week, at the press announce event in New Bedford, and I think maybe six or seven of them are actually doing the implementation, some of them are actually putting the MVP grant together. And I wanted to mention it, because one of my goals for last year that you all set for me, was to apply for the MVP designation. So we did get that done, we applied for it, and as a result, we were eligible for that round of funding that we just had. So we got the application in, got approved, and made it into the round and actually got funded. So it was great. So thank you for your support.
We move on. Thank you very much. Anything else? Okay, we have some minutes in front of us for January 13th, 2020, and January 27th, 2020. Any errors, omissions, corrections, questions? Being none, I'll accept them as presented. And on that note.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.